Let a record show that a quorum is present and notice of this meeting was legally posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Please remember that items do not have to be taken in order shown on the agenda and please join us in turning your cell phones to the silent mode. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and as allowed by Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074 and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now 5:01 PM.
Thank you.
All right.
You read the coach. Very happy.
He really asked if there was a question. I know, I know, I did, yes, when I was diving it, I'm like, yeah, I can't wait to see her face, but...
I mean, we're only a million in the hole.
The board is now reconvening into open session at 6:01 PM. This month, the spotlight is on Regay Elementary. Welcome, students, parents, and staff. We want to thank you for decorating the bulletin boards here at the DSC with some very thoughtful theme, "Be the Reason Someone Smiles Today." Now, when I was here for a meeting a few days ago, I saw that and it made me smile just reading that board. So, thank you guys for that. That's a wonderful theme. I will call on Assistant Principal James Allen to give the invocation, followed by Ms. Julia Wells. She will introduce her students, who will lead us in the pledges. Thank you.
Would you please bow your head? Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our schools, and for all our students and staff members, both the teaching and support members. We ask that you bless them abundantly, and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Help us to be wise in decisions we make, for the good of all those who have placed the trust and confidence in our leadership. In your name we pray.
Good evening, President Fitch, Board members, Interim Superintendent Fraley. We have brought with us today our Safety Patrol and our Flag Patrol, if you will come up. Our Safety Patrol, they are great. In the afternoons, they make sure that everybody gets where they're supposed to. They take out our walkers, our car riders, bus riders, and daycare, and make sure that they get on there, they're safe as they go down the hall. And then we have our Flag Patrol, who every morning, they put our flags up. They take them down, they respectfully fold them. They have learned already how to fold that flag correctly and put that away, so we are very proud of them. Their sponsor is Coach Gary Dial. She takes care to make sure that they are trained. All right, I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
My name is Audrey McDermott, and my parents are John and Christine McDermott.
My name is Madeline Ritchie, and my parents are Amy and Adam Ritchie.
My name is Colin Murphy, my parents are Claire and Michael Murphy.
My name is Natalie Miller, my parents are Maria and Billy Miller.
My name is Christian Bach, and my parents' names are Vanessa Chambers and Chris Chambers.
My name is Mallory Sharpenstein. Sorry. And my mom's name is Heather Sharpenstein.
My name is Sebastian Cortez, and my parents are Christina and Octavia Cortez.
My name is Aiden Stroud, and my parents are Shasta Henson and Dusty Henson.
Pledge to the American flag, attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
As I say, students, stay put, and parents, if you want to grab any pictures, feel free to come forward or stand up and do so. Coach Dial, thank you for your work with the students.
Thank you for letting me.
That brings us to our celebration and information items. First off tonight is Mr. Les Leinberger with recognition portion of the meeting. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing some amazing students, as well as a bunch of amazing teachers. Mr. Leinberger.
Thank you. Good evening, President Fitch, Board members, and Interim Superintendent Fraley. I think I may have mentioned last month that we were going to have a lot of students here tonight, and we do, so it worked out perfectly. Allow me to mention this first. The Mike Moses Math Counts team was supposed to be here as well tonight because they qualified for their state competition. However, six of those seven students participate with the band at Mike Moses, and they're at a competition today. So, we're going to push them back into May to give them their opportunity to be here. From Nacogdoches High School tonight, we have the Dragons Student Response Team, the FCCLA Team, Dragons Cosmetology, and the STEM4 Students. And I'm going to bring Dr. Crespo up here, if, I think he may, right here, stage left. Dr. Crespo is going to introduce these students and their sponsors.
Good evening. How's everybody? Good evening, President Fitch, Board members, and Interim Superintendent Fraley. Very, very proud principal at Nacogdoches High School. Once again, I've cloned myself. I'm over at cheer practice, I'm over at the regional track meet, and here I am. We're all good. So, very, very proud. First, I want to recognize our Dragon SRT, our Student Response Team. So, as I call your name, Ms. Hill, who is their sponsor, is actually one of our assistant cheer coaches, so she's over at cheer tryouts, so she could not be here today. But I want to recognize Suchilla Luna, Callie Ford, and Kevin Benegas. These students competed in the state competition. Junior Suchilla Luna received third place in criminal case analysis, along with Callie Ford, third place in criminal case analysis. And then we had our first state champion in all of Nacogdoches High School this school year, Mr. Kevin Benegas, first place in foot pursuit. Give him a round of applause. So, parents, if y'all want to take some pictures real quick, I'm going to stand in for Ms. Hill because she told me to, and I told her I would.
Thank you. And students, can you tell us what you plan to pursue? Do you have any intent to pursue this as a career field?
Hi, I'm Suchilla, and I plan to attend the military right after high school and then become a lawyer.
Fantastic.
Hi, I'm Callie Ford. I plan to go into college for animal science and a double major in criminal justice. I plan to be a game warden.
Very nice.
I'm Kevin, and I intend to either be a state trooper, just because I don't like the way people drive.
We need a picture of him. Watch out for him.
Well, congratulations, and we get to.
All right, next up, I want to recognize our FCCLA group, led by Ms. Kaitlin Rowland. Focus on Children's Star Event State Qualifiers, Chaney Mulliken, Raquel Pacias, and Jelisa Flores. Please give them a round of applause. Ms. Rowland, would you like to say a few words before the picture?
Sure. Oh, sorry, I was trying to get the other one here. He's lost. So, my name is Kaitlin Rowland. I'm the family consumer science teacher at Nacogdoches High School. This is our first year to kind of reboot FCCLA, and so we just kind of went all in, did sorbitz. And so, these two, Jelissa and Chaney, and then the other one, Raquel, they decided to just focus on children's projects. And so, they put on a literacy event at the high school in January, and we had a pretty decent turnout. So, we went to regionals, we placed first, we went to skate, and we're just really excited for, you know, they're going to be recruiting our cheer seniors, so we're really excited to know what they have in progress.
That is amazing. So, I understand this was the first year we've competed in this, and we made it, had a state berth in our first year? Is that correct?
Ms. Rowland, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I said, so if I understand, this is the first time we've entered this competition, and we got a state berth our first year out. Wow, you guys should be really be, that's fantastic. Please tell us what your, I know you're juniors, but please tell us what your future plans are.
Well, I'm hoping to go and become a pediatrician.
Well, hi, I'm Jelisa, and I'm hoping to become a pediatrician.
I'm Chaney Mulliken, and I'm hoping to become an elementary school teacher.
Thank you, Dragons. Awesome. Next up, I want to recognize state qualifiers in FCCLA, led by Ms. Heather Payne, for the Chapter Service Project Display, to Cedric Johnson, Sadaria Fowler, and Ella Guireman. Round of applause. Ms. Payne, would you like to say a few words?
Well, these are actually my primary art students, and I wanted to do a little bit more service in the community, so they did their project on doing some community service in the primary community, so.
Fantastic. And if you don't mind, I'd love to hear from these students as well, if the board doesn't mind entertaining it. What are your future plans?
I would like to be a chef.
Fantastic.
I want to continue and advance in culinary.
I would also like to advance in the culinary, culinary.
Geek field.
Yes.
You're good. We can't wait. Maybe sometime, we'll have an opportunity, and you guys can, we can get the culinary department to do something for us. We would love that. So, congratulations.
Congratulations, Dragons. All right, next up, want to recognize our Skills USA Cosmetology State Qualifiers, led by Ms. Rebecca Jan Holland. I call your name, please come up. Joanna Sepeda, Vanessa Macias, and Junie Garcia.
This one competed in nail care. This one was in aesthetics, and our boy, Junie Garcia, he wasn't able to be here. Did the barbering contest. That's the first time we've ever done it, and he did very well. This is, both of these contests are two-day contests. It's an all-day long process. These young ladies worked really hard, and they will be successful.
And what are your future plans?
My future plan is to work at a local salon, or to get my license first, and then to go to college to get a business degree. And I competed in nail care.
My future plan is to get my cosmetology license, work in a salon, and I'm going to work in a salon while I go to college to study ultrasounds.
Very good.
Junie does my hair.
She does mine, too. Good job, ladies. Okay, next, we'd like to recognize some incredibly gifted students at NHS, our Cohort Two STEM4 seniors. Last year, in our first year of STEM Science Fair, we advanced eight students and five projects to the East Texas Regional Science Fair. Six students and three projects from that group advanced to state. This year, we advanced all sixteen students to the East Texas Regional Science Fair. Fifteen students and five projects advanced to state at the end of March, with one student achieving or advancing to the internationals in May. This is a huge first for our district. We appreciate the support and efforts of their STEM4 teacher, Mr. Ray, who could not be here tonight, and our STEM Academy Coordinator, Linda Autry. We'd also like to thank the STEM Center staff for their partnership, without which, none of this would be possible. Dr. Jana Redfield, Assistant Director of STEM Center at SFA, is here with us tonight. Dr. Redfield, would you stand and be recognized, please? And if you're the parent of one of these outstanding young people, would you please stand and be recognized as well? We know that these young scientists can only thrive with the support. We know that these young scientists can only thrive with the support of parent and guardians such as yourself. Our STEM Four students and the projects they took to state are as follows. Juan Rubio, Quantifying News Quality. Juan won the East Texas Regional Science Fair's Outstanding Achievement in Computer Science and the Sudden Link Cash Prize for Outstanding Research in Communications. Juan Rubio.
Wow.
Charmaine Season and Rebecca Pham, Parts of a Shoe Cleaning Machine. Gabe Godici, Mitchell Schaefer, and Andrea Castro, Methane Gas Model. Catherine Blau, Daisy Rogers, and Victoria Grissin, The Candle Project. Desi Gonzalez and Lauren Brasher, The Sun Absorber. Jordan Vardeman, Kay Luna, and Evan Leonard, Detecting Card Skimmers. Josh Roy, Photo Degradation of Hydrocarbons. Josh Roy won first place overall at the East Texas Regional Science Fair, first place in the Senior Physical Division, the U.S. Metric Association's Award for Best Use of the International Systems of Units, the American Chemical Society's Outstanding Chemistry Product, Project, and a Sudden Link Cash Prize for Outstanding Research in Energy. Josh is also our student who advances to compete in the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair in Phoenix in just a few weeks. Best wishes, Josh. Let's give the STEM Academy students a big hand.
All right, guys, who's up there? You've got the mic. We're excited, what an amazing group you guys have, so tell us what your plans are for the future.
So I'm Catherine Blau, and I'm planning on going to Texas State to major in mathematics.
Fantastic, congratulations.
I'm Rebecca Pham, and I will be attending UT Arlington and want to major in architecture.
My name's Charmaine Season, I will be attending University of Texas at Austin, and my major is nutrition.
Hi, I'm Andrea Castro, and I'm gonna attend UT Austin for computer science.
Very nice.
Hi, I'm Josh Roy, and I'm gonna be attending UC Berkeley to study computer science and hopefully research with artificial intelligence in the future.
Hi, my name's Desi Gonzalez, and I will be attending Texas A&amp;M at Texarkana, and I will be majoring in biology.
Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Mitchell Schaefer, I will be attending Texas A&amp;M at Galveston to major in marine biology.
Hello, I'm Evan Leonard, I'll be attending UT Austin to major in Plant Two in Biology in hopes of becoming a genetic engineer.
Hi, my name is Juan Rubio, I'm currently an undecided major attending an undecided institution.
Get back to us.
I'm Victoria Grissin, I'll be attending UT Austin and major in marine sciences.
Oh, fantastic. We are so proud of each of you, you represent Nacogdoches so well, and we can't wait to see what you're gonna do to change the world.
Thank you.
And I would be remiss if I didn't again thank Linda Autry and Dr. Redfield back there for all of their hard work in developing our STEM program. This is just the beginning, and I can't wait to see what lays ahead.
Good stuff. So once again, I am Dr. Ram Crespo, Principal at Nacogdoches High School, and it is a great day to be alive, it's a great time to be a Dragon. Thank you, Dr. Crespo, he's gonna be back next month as well, so we've still got more to go. Wasn't that great? That was just awesome, there's no other way to say that. This evening, we also get to do something else that's, well, really awesome. We've got the opportunity to recognize our campus and district Teachers of the Year. All of these teachers were selected as Campus Teacher of the Year before submitting an application for District Teacher of the Year. A committee that included representatives from the district, higher education, and the community at large judged the applications and selected the teachers for District of the, District Teacher of the Year for Secondary and Elementary. Ms. Fitch has been gracious enough to help me hand these out, and so we're going to recognize our Campus Teachers of the Year right now. So let's get started. Sarah Barnes, Brooks Quinn Jones Elementary. Sidney Hampton, Emmeline Carpenter Elementary. Wendy Barnhill, Fredonia Elementary. Veronica Jones, Nettie Marshall, Academy of Dual Language. Holly, Holly Flasowski, Regay Elementary. Teresa Garcia, Thomas J. Rusk Elementary. Terry Hoval, McMichael Middle School. Becky Martin, Mike Moses Middle School. Rebecca Herramio, Nacogdoches High School. Alex Chandler Izell, Malcolm Rector Technical High School. Deena Cox, Malcolm Rector DAEP. Those are our Campus Teachers of the Year for 2019. Now, our District Teachers of the Year get a little more hardware to carry with them. So our Elementary Teacher of the Year is Veronica Jones. And our Secondary Teacher of the Year is Becky Martin. We're proud of all of these teachers, and our two District Teachers of the Year will be moving on now to take part in the competition at the regional level as well. Thank you all very much. Board President, I'm convinced that I've got the best job in the district because I get to go do all the fun stuff, and one of the, one of the best things we do is earlier this week, when some of us went out to, to tell the District Teachers of the Year that they had won. That's just a special time, and I'm thankful to be a part of that. Thank you all.
Thank you. Wow, it's hard to follow all that excitement, Mr. Juan, but that's wonderful. It makes everything worth it. Next up is our interim superintendent's report.
Thank you, President, thank you, President Fitch, trustees. Definitely a hard act to follow, certainly is. I want to recognize that this month is April is School Library Month, and our librarians are all kind of out of town, and they're on the way back from their conference. We really appreciate all that they do to promote literacy, which is a tremendously important skill for our children. We can't overstate how important literacy is, and these folks do more than just check out books. They're reading, they're modeling, reading, they're working with kids, mentoring kids on all types of things, and we want to thank them for all that they do each and every day. Yesterday, we had quite a few folks gathered around this building, we had our district-wide, kind of our official pre-K kindergarten registration, and if all of these folks show up, we're gonna have quite, I don't have the numbers from yesterday, but it was a crowd, I know, we had folks parked all over the place. So I want to thank all the team that came together to stuff packets and pass them out and to work with parents and families, and I left about 6:30, they were still passing out packets last night. And some had come by even days before that as well, so we're looking forward to folks being here with us next year and having a nice little turnout. We want to thank all the folks who work in teaching and learning, transportation, student nutrition, PEMS, our nurses, student support services, social workers, instructional aides, campus staff, it truly was an all-hands-on-deck, I really thank everybody for what they did. And to teach all of these students, we're gonna have our District Teacher Fair, April 27th, Saturday, at McMichael Middle School in the Cafeteria, she went over for NISD and helped teach these kiddos, we hope you'll look to joining our team. We have campus principals there, you can come meet them, they'll probably try to hire you on the spot. They don't volunteer because they're kind, they're trying to steal the best teachers first. You can drop off your resume, meet folks, and just explore the benefits of working in NISD, there are a lot of things to be considered. You can preregister up through April 25th or just show up, glad to have you. May 20th, we're going to return to honoring our special teachers, those who are, all employees who are retiring, we'll have our retiree banquet, April 20th, at the Civic Center, we'll have, sorry, May 20th, May 20th at Civic Center, we'll have all of our retirees recognized along with their families and colleagues, we're excited about that, the trustees will be there with us as well, and we'll keep the focus on our employees, we're excited about that work. And one more thing, was there an event, this is what, Thursday, I guess it was Tuesday night, was there an event Tuesday night? And our own President and Mrs. Pam Fitch was recognized by the American Association University of Women, recognized for public service, so congratulations to you, Mrs. Fitch, for that. And Ms. Lisa Fuller, Naxos High School, recognized as well for Public Education. So, Ms. Fuller, Ms. Fitch, thank you.
I wish Ms. Fuller was here to enjoy that as well, well deserved for her.
And that's all I have for my report, just want to wish everyone a very safe weekend and happy Easter, and remember what it's all about.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that report. We will now move to the public comment portion of our agenda. Individuals wishing to speak completed a form located on the table by the entrance of the door prior to the meeting. We have two speakers tonight. We ask that you keep your comments to a maximum of three minutes. Groups of five or more individuals having the same concern shall have a single spokesperson for the group. This open forum is not the time or place to make complaints about a district employee. The board has specific complaint policies and procedures for presenting those concerns. The board cannot respond to comments in this open forum, but we can inform you of district policies and procedures. The total time allotted for this portion of the meeting is thirty minutes. Mr. Michael Martin will keep time for us, and I will call it to the speaker's attention should their time limit expire. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Michael Moore. There you are hiding on the back row. Good evening, sir, thank you for being here.
When I first came in, it was about a little bit less than this crowd, and then everybody came in, I was like, oh, it's gonna be a really big crowd, and then everybody leaves, and I was like, oh, it's back to what it was. My name's Mike Moore, I'm here as a community member tonight, I also work at the public library, and I was a former teacher at NAC ISD, working at Carpenter Elementary. During my time there, I started a garden program there, we moved it to an after-school program, and since then, I've been working with other organizations within the city to garden. We came out and we spoke one night, we talked to the principals as well, and we've been in touch here and there with other people. We're just trying to continue to grow that mass and grow that support, so I just wanted to kind of come in here and give you guys an update of what's happening. This last week, a few of us went out and worked with Jody Franks over at Mike Moses, and kinda I worked with some of her students to help beautify the front of the school, and talked to her about some of her plans to make that a more appealing place to just be as you drive up, so it's not just a big blank building, but it has stuff growing that's beautiful, that's student-driven and student-designed. And then, just Tuesday, Jocelyn Moore went out there and helped build garden beds out there as well, to help their garden program kick off as well. Earlier, about a month ago, we were over at BQJ with Resilient Nacogdoches and Texas A&amp;M, SFA, and the library as well, to help them kind of rehab some of their garden space as well before the big event came out, and also helped out with that. I've talked to Robin Thacker about doing summer programs, I'll be working with her as a library person to go out to the meal sites, and I'm hoping to work with Texas A&amp;M to bring in a little bit of nutrition in there, and maybe even do some like neighborhood buck- even do some like neighborhood bucket gardens, and that's still in the works. So, we're looking forward to that. We're also working with SFA, the SANS, which is Student Association of Nutrition and Dieticians. And they're also helping out. They've been pushing out to help out over at Nutty Marshall Site for their after-school program, which just concluded for the year, but we're hoping to get some of them back next year to help just with those masses. I know that they had about 50 kids in the after-school program, which is a lot of kids to run through a garden space unless you have a huge garden space. So, we'll look to more designs with that, especially with the new schools being built and the transfer of students and how that ends up. We might be sifting for a little bit. I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of the teachers. Some of them were Teacher of the Year, like Cindy Hampton, and working with her precares. Just amazing people that you guys have in this district, and just a really pleasure to be working with them. And that's pretty much it. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. We appreciate your passion and your energy, sir.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Next tonight, we have Mr. Zee, Charles Zimmack. Zimmack. I'll keep working on it.
I don't think half my family can say it the right way. Good evening, President Fitch, Board members, and Interim Superintendent Fraley. I want to start by apologizing. One of my high school principals, Clarence Williams, was a great man. He came from Louisiana. He told me, "Zee, before you speak before people, always dress sharp." I failed, I apologize. Secondly, always have prepared remarks. They are promptly sitting on my desk, so I have scribbled together my notes. And third, always thank and honor somebody that is greater than yourself. I can at least do that today. So, let me start by saying, I apologize. I love to attend these board meetings. They are thrilling for me. However, recently, we've been very busy at McMichael Middle School as we've been really taking science to the next step. So, I'm very lucky to have a great team of dynamic educators at the McMichael Science Department where we seek to cultivate curiosity in every student every day. I'm here today to invite you all to our Third Annual Science Showcase on May 23rd and 24th. It was so good, we're gonna do it twice. I will gladly send out more on the exact times. We're still in the works of that, but I wanted to kind of plug a bug in everyone's ear today about that. This year, you can expect to see countless wonders of our sixth and seventh grade students as they show off their research into infectious diseases, our body systems, test the limits of physics with a hovercraft. But most importantly, I want you to come and see all of our future young men and women as they embrace the exciting, messy, and creative process that will make them the scientists of tomorrow. So, we appreciate your support and cannot wait to see you.
Thank you, sir. You were talking a lot slower tonight. Thank you for being here. We appreciate that. All right, we will now move on to the Consent Agenda. All items listed will be acted on with one motion. If there is a board member who wishes to discuss an item on the Consent Agenda separately, please indicate the agenda letter, and it will be set aside for further discussion and a separate vote.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I move approval of Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. I have a motion for approval of the Consent Agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Reverend Irvin. Got a motion and a second. All those in... Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That will lead us to our Discussion Action Agenda, and we will now proceed with all of these items, and these will be heard separately. Our first item tonight, let me flip my page, is Item 7A, Consideration of Approval of Design Development for McMichael Middle School. Mr. Fraley.
Thank you, President Fitch. You see the presentation for P B K on Monday about this, and you have your nice booklets tonight to look at, and so this is before you offer your consideration, we are ready to get busy. I want to thank the staff at McMichael, Mr. Mulliken, Mr. Archer from Moses as well, and all of the teams they've had working on this. It's been a tremendous effort. These guys know that school every square inch of it, and I just really appreciate the spirit they brought and the creativity as well. And so, we have for you all to approve tonight, and we'll try to find a way to build it.
All right. Before we move into any discussion or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the board approve Design Development for McMichael Middle School as documented Design Development Book dated April 18, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I will second.
We'll give Mr. Nermond the second. Are there... Is there any discussion or questions on this item? Hearing none. If all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Consideration of Selection of Construction Manager at Risk and Pre-Construction Phase Services Contracts for the Following Projects. Number one, a new press box at Dragon Stadium, Nacogdoches High School. Two, new Emmeline Carpenter Elementary School. Three, additions and renovations at McMichael Middle School. And four, Malcolm Rector C T E Center and C T E renovations at Nacogdoches High School. Mr. Fraley.
Thank you, Madam President. Very excited about this next step in getting these projects off the ground. We added some proposals received on by April 9th, looked at those, narrowed it down to four, got four responses, and we have tonight a recommendation to you all affirm to be our partner in this work, and we are excited about working with someone who's actually from East Texas is our recommendation.
Before we have any questions or discussions, I will entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move the board approve that W R L General Contractors as Construction Manager at Risk and approve the pre-construction services contract for the following projects: New Press Box at Dragon Stadium, Nacogdoches High School; New Emmeline Carpenter Elementary School; Addition and Renovation at McMichael Middle School; Malcolm Rector C T E and C T E renovation at Nacogdoches High School.
I second the motion.
Thank you. We had a motion by Mr. Nermond, a second by Dr. Gromon. Any discussion? Questions?
Madam President, I would just like to see if maybe Mr. Fraley could clarify just a couple of things that we've discussed over time. This is a... This... What we're doing is a facility improvement based on the board, on the bond. It is not designating programs or classes or anything inside those buildings. To stick with what the bond is, it truly is the building.
That is correct. This is all about construction.
Okay.
They're not in here, are they? The W R L?
No, but they've been trying to find out if they're gonna win or not. Oh, there we are.
Well, I wanted to address them, and I wanted to address everybody. I think we're very fortunate to get somebody from so close to us, and I kind of looked them up on the Internet and looked at some of their work, and they have 51 projects that they've done, and it's been Marshall and some faraway places, not just at Tyler. And the good news, out of those 51 schools, these are schools, junior college, high school, middle school, elementary schools, out of those 51, they did 20 of those were elementary, and that's what we want, a new elementary. We want the other things. Now, we don't expect you to be perfect, but we will accept near-perfect.
Excuse me? Yes, we do want perfection.
So, we... Your reputation, it will become part of our reputation, and it will showcase your work in this area for all the other school districts in our county, as well as the neighboring this whole area of the state. And we think that that will be a good partnership with us and you and putting something here that's gonna really shine for our community and this whole portion of East Texas.
Any other questions? Discussion? I did have one clarification question. I realize that the selection is, while in East Texas, not a local company, did we have any local bidders in this process?
We did not. I spoke directly with one local person, and they explained that they do not have the capacity all the time. Their model could not do what we needed them to do, so they reached out to me personally directly to explain why they did not bid. And the other one, I just thought they could not handle all of the projects at one time.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. All right. Hearing no other discussion or questions, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, all. Welcome to the team. Glad to have you.
Yes. We're excited to get you around the table.
More to come.
All right, that takes us to Item C, Consideration of the 2019-2020 Instructional Calendar. Dr. Hill, any additions since Monday?
No, ma'am.
All right. I'll entertain a motion before we have any discussion or questions.
I go ahead, ma'am. I move the board approve the calendar option A as 2019-2020, N I S D's school calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Nermond. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Neal. Thank you very much. Any discussions or questions?
I just... I want to clarify, that calendar selection is the one that goes together with SFA's spring break, right?
Yes. We triple-checked it.
Right.
We did.
Yes. And I know Dr. Gromon and Reverend Irvin were not available at our workshop the other day, but this was the selection that's being proposed was overwhelmingly the majority of the vote of the staff.
Right.
Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. If you're in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to our Report Section, 8A, the 2019 Graduation Projection. I see that we're gonna have Dr. Crespo and Dr. Hill on this presentation tonight.
It's going to be me for the moment, and I will do my best. He's on his way back, so bear with us. Good evening, President Fitch, Board of Trustees, Interim Superintendent Fraley. What you have in front of you is a list of approximately 38 students. Of course, they're represented by numbers to protect confidentiality of the students, and you will see the results of each of those students and their E O Cs. Those are skill scores. But I do want to draw your attention to the last seven students, numbers 32 through 38. You will also notice that there are several E O Cs that are lacking, as well as credit deficiencies. So, those are the students that we really have our eye on. The upper students, that I was 1 through 31, they have something, the Individual Graduation Project that students are currently working on. They will... They have taken... Retaken their E O C, they will continue to retake it, but then we also have the Individual Graduation Project that they're working on in conjunction.
When will we have the... I'm gonna get my terminology wrong, I'm afraid, Dr. Hill, because I'm not from education, but basically, it's the graduation rate percentage that we see. That's been very important to us, and aboard, one of our goals was to see that increase over the next several years. When will we actually... I know it takes a little while because you've got to get through all this testing and stuff. When will those numbers be available?
Oh, my gosh. It could be as, I would think, as late as the day of graduation. I know in past history, students are working up to the... In some instances, the very last moment.
Up until the last minute.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it stays open. There's literally up to the day graduation.
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna turn and look at Ms. Ivy and see if I've said anything incorrectly. Is that right? Okay.
Right. Thank you.
And Dr. Crespo's on his way back, but if there's additional questions, I can get him to come up here.
Any additional questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. We've... Next, we've got the Annual Announcement of Continuing Education for Board Members. Bear with me, we've got a little bit of reading to do here. Okay. Under State Board of Education Rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. As Board President, I am required to announce the name of each member who, as of that member's anniversary of election or appointment to the board, has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuation, and is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. There are four tiers or categories of board member continuing education. Tier one, local district orientation, basic legal orientation and legal update training. Tier two, team-building training with all board members and the superintendent. Tier three, annual continuing education. And tier four, evaluating and improving student outcomes. To the extent applicable to board members under the legal requirements for the four tiers, I will announce the completion or deficiency as required training. At the conclusion of this announcement, I will announce any board member's training in excess of the continuing education requirements. Tier one, orientation and legal update training. Local district orientation training. The following first-year board members have completed the Tier one Local District Orientation Session, Dr. Tyrell Gromon and Mindy Winslow. The following first-year board members have completed the Tier one Basic Orientation Training regarding the Texas Education Code and relevant legal obligations, Dr. Tyrell Gromon and Mindy Winslow. Tier two is the team-building training. The following board members have completed the required team-building training. Pam Fitch, G W Neal, James Montoya, James Irvin, Dr. Tyrell Gromon, Fashid Nermond, and Mindy Winslow. Tier three is the annual continuing education. The following board members have completed the Tier three Annual Continuing Education Requirements. Pam Fitch, G W Neal, James Montoya, James Irvin, Dr. Tyrell Gromon, Fashid Nermond, and Mindy Winslow. Tier four is evaluating and improving student outcomes training. The following board members have completed the required training on evaluating and improving student outcomes. Pam Fitch, G W Neal, James Montoya, James Irvin, Dr. Tyrell Gromon, Fashid Nermond, and Mindy Winslow. Also proud to say that we have all exceeded our required continuing education. Board Member Pam Fitch exceeded the required amount of continuing education by training 3.5 additional hours over the required five hours. Board Member G W Neal exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by 6.75 additional hours over the required five hours. Board Member James Montoya exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by 9.75 additional hours over the required five hours. Board Member James Irvin exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by one additional hour over the required five hours. Board Member Dr. Tyrell Gromon exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by 11.75 additional hours over the required five hours. Oh, I'm sorry, 38.5. I got off the line there. I apologize. 38.5. And I have to say that that is... You hold the record there, Dr. Gromon. Very impressive. Very impressive. Board Member Fashid Nermond exceeded the required amount of required continuing education by 11.75 additional hours over the required five hours. Board Member Mindy Winslow exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by 7.75 additional hours over the required 10 hours. This concludes this report. Let the minutes reflect the hours as announced on this report and be attached to the official meeting minutes. Thank you. All right. That takes us to Item Nine on our agenda, and I will entertain a motion.
Okay. I move that we adjourn. That's my job. That's my job.